Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. So let's start with a roll call and disclosure of virtual attendance. Nick?
Baker?
Uh, from the office in Bath Township.
Humans Bliss?
Here at my house in Bath Township. I may at some point end up at the soccer field during this meeting, though.
Can appreciate that extra disclosure there. Kramer?
Yeah, I'm attending remotely from my home in Bath Township.
Reich?
I'm attending remotely from my house in Bath Township.
Severi?
Attending remotely from home in Bath Township.
And lastly, but not least, Joel Gutske, because alphabets are difficult and I accidentally put G at the end.
Present at my home in Bath Township.
All right.
Okay, great, thanks. So next item is the approval of the agenda and it sounds like we have at least one addition to the agenda. John?
I'll approve the agendas submitted. Well, with an addition, we have a discussion about the Westpac Nokaloff's area.
Okay, so we'll add that under what? Maybe new business, I guess.
That would be great.
All right, item number C. Any other?
We're the motion, Dan.
Great. And any, any further discussion? All right, so if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. All right, and our agenda has been approved. So this opportunity next on the agenda is the disclosure of conflicts of interest with any item on the agenda tonight. Any disclosures tonight? All right, I'm not seeing any, so let's move on. So we have one opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone on my list of attendees that is public. So I think we can move on from there. We've got one set of minutes to approve this evening, April 27th, 2021. Any comments or suggested changes on those minutes?
I have.
Yeah, George?
Thank you, Chair. I have, uh, the rule call says disclosure from home. I was in the office.
Okay. Thanks, George. Other suggestions? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll do so.
And we have support by Ray, I think. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And oppose the same sign, and the minutes have been approved. Nick, do we have any communications you'd like to share?
I do. Before we do that, I just want clarification. I know we added the Nokaloffs as an item. Did we add that under new or old business?
I did add that under new, and yeah, it's new in the sense that I think we're expecting something new from them, so, but it could have gone under old as well, I guess.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I had it in the right place. So, thank you. As you all know, last week, Wednesday through Friday was the Virtual American Planning Association National Conference. I viewed, I would say about half of that from our conference room at the township offices and the other half from home. I had a couple of you join me for various sessions, so I appreciate that. There were some very good sessions, and there were some sessions that I had high expectations for that unfortunately just did not live up to those expectations. But regardless, I thought there were a lot of really interesting topics. There certainly seemed to be a lot of focus on public engagement as well as equity. And then there was also quite a bit of talk about the physical environment and, and just building better communities. One moment, please. Sorry about that. So that's my first item. Secondly, along that same note, I'd spoken with George and John both about a couple of the sessions that we really wanted to attend or that we thought were really important. And I'll have recordings of those. I'll have access to those at some point down the road. So if we have interests, we can set up some sort of a small viewing of those. You know, it shouldn't be more than, and more than one or two of them. But there were a couple of those topics I thought were really important. So whether that be, you know, we, we set up and meet at the township offices, or if we can watch it on, you know, in a meeting, I don't know. But I'll figure out the logistics of that once I have that opportunity. And then the last item, as you all know, Jason is not here this evening. The first meeting of the zoning board of appeals is next week, and he was appointed by the Board of Trustees to be on the zoning board of appeals. As you all know, he cannot be on both. So, you know, essentially effective immediately, he's having to step off the planning commission. Just so we don't have any, any issues there from a legal standpoint. So, you know, personally, I'm sad to see him go, but I know he's still definitely involved at the board level and, you know, looking forward to working with him on the zoning board of appeals. So I think I, that's it.
All right, great, thank you. Do we have any updates on new commissioners? Any applications?
I know that there's been some discussion, but I'm not aware of any
Okay.
movement there.
And if you saw the packet from the board meeting last week, I'm trying to get my calendar in my head. There was a candidate that the supervisor put forward for
I think it was sewer board of appeals.
Thank you. It's been a long day. He had also chosen in his application that he was interested in planning commission, and when I looked at his application, he looks like he's a really good candidate for planning commission. So I asked the board, the supervisor was there last week, so I asked the board to hold him so I could ask Marie if she would be interested in putting him forward for this committee instead. So I just haven't been able to poke her yet. I'll do that this week, though. If you all want to see who it is, his application is in the packet from last week's board meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks for that, Ryan. Yeah, I had heard that, but I think I didn't get my story straight. I knew sort of both of those boards were in play, and I didn't understand the connection between them, so that's helpful.
I think he could have sat on both, but as you know, the supervisor is trying to prevent people from serving on more than one committee. So I was afraid if we would have put him on the SBA last week, she would have not chosen to put him forward to this. So it's up to her ultimately, but I wanted to give, make sure she had all the options.
Right, okay, great, thank you. All right, any other, any comments or questions for Nick on those communications? George?
Yes, thank you, Nick, for making the room available and the classes available to us. Really appreciate it.
Seeing no other comments, let's move on then. So we don't have any old business, so let's move directly to item number nine, which is new business. Three items there. So the first one is, I think, an initial discussion, I know, an initial discussion on revisiting our parking requirements for the township. And Nick helpfully included a number of different materials in the packet. Nick, do you want to kind of provide an overview of, I guess, what you think here and what you think we might be doing in relation to this issue going forward?
Thank you, yes. I, I made you all read. I wanted this to be sort of a preliminary sort of philosophical discussion. You know, I've had my own experiences in terms of parking requirements. I did ask our zoning administrator, Bert Gale, to be here as well because he has experience of, you know, several decades of parking requirements. And I know this is a topic that the planning commission has quite a bit of interest in. So I suppose I'll just sort of briefly go over these three readings that I provided. The first is just an article from a magazine called Access. It's a transportation magazine, and this article was written by a professor from Cal State Polytechnic University. And I thought it was quite interesting, just talking about why we have parking requirements, why it's difficult to change them. And then perhaps why eliminating those parking minimum requirements may not always be the most logical solution. So that was the first article that I provided. The second here is written actually by a, an urban planner from Canada. And this focuses more on not just reducing parking requirements or changing those requirements, but also parking management in terms of, of demand management. So that was included in the packet as well, and I'm happy to pull that up on the screen because there are some tables. And then the third piece I had provided here is just parking best practices as it relates to smart growth, which I know is a topic that was heavily focused on in the 2013 comprehensive plan and has also been a topic of interest for the planning commission as well. So those are the three that I provided. I certainly have some thoughts on this, but really what I wanted to do was just hear what everyone is, is thinking in terms of how we want to approach this. And, and go from there.
All right, great, thanks, Nick. So yeah, let's open this up for discussion.
I've got a suggestion that I, I'm evidently not in tune with the others in these studies, or mostly, for the most part at least. I'm of the opinion, a lot of our parking spaces, particularly in businesses, you know, the Bath Meyer had, I think, we had wider spaces for parking. I mean, I see vehicles getting larger, not smaller, and some of the places we have just have really narrow spots. And I suppose you could park out by the street if you wanted to and walk clear to the door, but I mean, I think for the most part, most members of the public would appreciate larger spaces, not smaller. I know I would, but it seems to fly in the face of a study or two here.
It does seem like there's a bit of divergence. Cars are both getting smaller and larger. The big ones are getting bigger and the small ones are getting smaller. So I certainly agree with what you're saying there. If we were talking about making travel lanes wider, I think I'd be more worried, but parking spaces, you know, having varying sizes, I'm not necessarily so concerned about. I think that's a fair, a fair concern in some instances.
And it could be too, that the wider adoption of electric vehicles might change that too, right? I mean, maybe that if you're freed from fuel economy standards, that cars get bigger yet because they're mostly electric or increasingly electric. I mean, one thought I had, you know, is that I have a sense, and, but it's completely not based on any evidence or fact, really, that we've got too much parking space. But I'm wondering what we can do to try to actually assess, you know, Bath Township and our, our current requirement for parking. You know, do we require too much? And how would we assess that? And knowing too that this is a terrible time to do such an assessment, assessment during a pandemic when a lot of people's behaviors have changed kind of dramatically from maybe what they typically are. But any thoughts, Nick, or Bert, or anyone else on sort of how we could do an assessment to get a basic read on this question?
I think Bert will.
Yeah, I don't really have an idea on the first one, although just want to poke Nick here a little bit. I mean, I'm decades old. He said I had decades of experience. Anyway. We do require too many parking spaces, in my opinion, for an awful lot of things. You know, if you, like, the Myers is a good example. I don't know that anybody could probably tell me even on Thanksgiving Day or the day before Thanksgiving or day before Christmas that you could find the parking lot full. Which, I don't know if that's the busiest day for Myers, but it gotta be close. So I think we actually do ask for an awful lot of parking. You know, go down to, you know, the Bath Four Corners and take a look at the little shopping mall there. Look at all the impervious surfaces that we got down there. That I think could have not been quite so large. So I'm in complete agreement that sort of a adjustment needs to be made somehow. I'm not quite sure how to do that. I think the discussion tonight maybe can begin the process at least.
So I have lots of thoughts on this, but I definitely don't want to talk over anybody.
So George, I did see, I think you saw your hand going up, right?
Yes, I, I was gonna say something about too many parking spots also. I mean, it's nice if you're having a car show or a big event. I know in Bath, when they have the the Corser race, you know, there's a lot of the cross-country races. There's a, there's no place to park. So I don't know if there's any way to incorporate maybe a still having some available open space that, you know, on a nice sunny day, you can still park in the field. I mean, I'm just throwing this out brainstorming kind of. But, you know, I feel the same way when I pull into Myers, there's a lot of empty spots that could be utilized maybe for another business or, you know, ultimately it's theirs, but that's it.
Yeah, thanks, George.
So actually, since we're talking about Meyer, I'm gonna share my screen real quick, and we'll look at the, the Google Earth satellite image over here. This is just a typical day of that Meyer parking lot. I would say that's probably thirty to forty percent full, and that's probably being a little bit generous. So, you know, there's a lot of open spaces, and that's just one example, but I wanted to pull that up. And actually, since we're in the same general area, I'm gonna go over to the MSU FCU. Again, this is just one example, but why do we require, why are we requiring eighty-four parking spaces for that? I, I'm having a hard time picturing when those, when that parking lot's gonna be full. If someone else would talk, I'm gonna go deal with these two while I listen.
Okay.
Right? Yeah, okay, just a couple of thoughts. One on, on parking assessment like that, I think now that we've got drones available, that's the easiest way to do this, is just some send drone up on, on key days, take the picture, and then you can analyze it back in the office instead of having to go count the space. I've got a parking assessment in a town north of here before drones were available. And I actually went out on the street and we, and had some interns help count spaces. That's a slow way to do it, but now we get the drones available, that's an easier way to do it. On, on parking widths of parking spaces, lots of times, at least in the past, that's been kind of based on turnover rate of the space. You know, high turnover rate, you want a wider space. For all-day parking, you can have a narrower space because people are gonna go in and out of that space once, maybe twice a day. Places like Myers, they may be in and out of that space once an hour. And so Myers and higher turnover place should have wider spaces to make it easier for the, for the user. So I think it depends on the, on the use as to what, how wide the spaces should be.
Dan, I've got something. If we, if we could incorporate terminal islands or some sort of garden open space within a parking lot to minimize the asphalt footprint, for lack of a better term, and brighten it up and make it greener, or some sort of raised buffer yard or something like that, that with natural fauna or whatever, that might break it up and make it look a little more aesthetic too. I don't know, but I agree with Ray on the, the frequency of the exiting and, and entering of the parking would matter greatly as far as with the size of the spot, I would think.
Yeah. So, so three things really jumped out at me in those documents, I guess, three sort of things that we could start looking at. So one is just, you know, I think the value of an incremental approach, which one of them advocated. So if we kind of don't know what we're doing in some sense, and we don't want to make a mistake, you know, choosing a number, it's going to be somewhat arbitrary, but let's diminish all parking by ten percent, let's say. Or whatever that number is, right? So that, that's one way you could do this. The second thing is that, that kind of was, I thought was interesting and useful, was that, you know, beyond just the absolute number of spaces we required per square foot, and I think that's how our ordinance is written, you know, we could look at making parking more flexible among multiple uses or, or in, in settings where it makes sense. And I'm thinking of, you know, the Dollar General situation that we had when we were talking about, you know, kind of the shared parking lot between Darryl Kessler and Dollar General and, and trying to sort of look at areas of the ordinance where we can sort of see where those opportunities to kind of have shared access to parking rather than kind of individually, business by business, sort of totaling up the spaces needed. And then the third kind of just relates to Ray and Joel's point that I don't think currently we have any, we don't differentiate between uses in our parking requirements, and we probably ought to. You know, as Nick's pictures illustrated, Meyer is a different beast than the Federal Credit Union, and we probably ought to consider them differently beyond just square footage when we're thinking of parking requirements. And I don't think our ordinance probably does a really good job of that.
Yeah, if I can jump back in here. You know, I, I I'm guessing we haven't looked at these parking requirements in, you know, well over a decade. I don't know, that's just an assumption. But what I'm really thinking is we should look at these uses that have changed in terms of their in-person versus online use. The internet has changed some things. Banks are not as busy. Some stores are not as busy. Doctors' offices going forward might change, especially with, you know, the current pandemic and the rise of people using telehealth. You know, those are just three broad categories that come to mind for me. But, you know, I mean, the, the MSU FCU, the bank jumped right out at, at me when I looked at that aerial because there was not a single car in that parking lot when that aerial was taken. So maybe it was a weekend. But still, I mean, I don't go to the bank that often, but I, I don't know if I've ever seen a bank parking lot completely full.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. George?
Sorry, good job there, John. Thanks, Chair. Also, you know, some of that will determine like if the title changes or something, it might be factory one time, and then it might be a grocery store the next time, which be a usage difference too. So I don't know how you add in there.
John?
Now, I think we should have a little more flexibility depending on the use in the site. Because if, if you've got a lot of snow space that you can move the snow off the parking lot, that's not the same as accumulating in the parking lot. And we do have a number of areas where people pile up the snow in the parking lot in the winter, which is an issue. And I think that you're right. It depends on the kind of business and the kind of can, traffic flow in and out, and the number of people we have. So I think we should have more flexibility in the parking. And I also think it would be a good idea if businesses had a separate area for their employees to park in. Because they, they don't go in and out as often as the customer does.
Is there anything in our ordinance that prohibits businesses from offering designated employee parking?
No.
No?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
They can do it, it's just that they're, they're not required to do it. Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I think they should be encouraged to do that.
Yeah.
So I, I do have, you know, without us having a, a big discussion or me doing a lot more research on this, I have a handful of, if, if we were to make a decision right now on what we wanted to do, I have, you know, a handful of suggestions. You know, some of them may be valid, some of them are not. I, I think that particularly if we're talking about the high-density development district and in hopes that that will be, you know, an area that has some built-up development whenever that happens. I think that might be one district where it's appropriate to not allow additional parking beyond what the current listed requirement in the zoning ordinance is. I don't know that a developer is ever going to want to build a bunch of extra spaces. But, you know, if we want to encourage that as an area that's walkable, then in, in my opinion, cap, capping parking for a, a particular use is appropriate.
Nick, just, just on that point, and you're in, I think you're implying, and this seems correct to me, is that we have no, we have a minimum, but we have no maximum parking requirement, correct?
Correct, yeah, so.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and what I was gonna say is, is, you know, when you sort of had the rise of the automobile in the early nineteen hundreds, and then parking really became an issue, it was all market-based. You know, there were no parking requirements, so people were determining how much space they needed to dedicate to that just based on demand. And then over time, you know, communities started requiring parking and those numbers increased and increased. And they, until recently, haven't gone down at all. So that, I think, is a food for thought. Another idea I had, and really for Bath, this would only apply to one or two areas. But I think that if we have a proposal for a multi-family development, perhaps any development that would have parking requirements attached to it, if it's within a quarter mile of a bus stop, I think that the planning commission should have some flexibility to be able to reduce those parking requirements. And again, that would depend on what the use is. But, you know, again, anecdotally, I'm thinking of here in Chandler Crossing where there's you could put in, you know, two, three, four, five hundred more units and put in no more parking spaces, and you'd probably not have an issue with parking capacity. Just because a lot of people who live here are college students and they take the buses to and from campus, and that's really the end of it. Another thing I think that we should do is add language into our ordinance for parking requirements, saying that we encourage parking agreements. Again, it would depend on the adjacent uses, but that's a, a tool that I think is underutilized and something that we should explore encouraging more.
Dan, I've got a question. Having been somewhat removed for a while from the mission, I don't recall whether we ever had, as part of the application process, a feasible feasibility study on required usage for retail businesses and that type of thing, where how often they come and go, the, the length of an actual shopping stay and that sort of thing. Do we do any of that anymore, or no? Do we make it part of the process?
I don't believe we ever done that, no.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. I mean, it does put another burden, I guess, on the applicant. You know, one way, though, I think to get at that idea, we're kind of talking about is in so many other areas of the ordinance, we provide some flexibility for the planning commission to adjust standards, you know, based on the particular case before us, right? And so we could try to, you know, include some language in the ordinance that allows the planning commission some wiggle rooms to relax those parking requirements. And it may depend on shared parking agreements. It may depend on multiple uses, having access to the same parking facility, you know, a number of different things, but you could kind of just write that in. And so when the site plan comes before us, we can adjust that minimum if needed, if we think it makes sense, and if the applicant, you know, can make a case, like you're saying, Joel, right, for their need. I, I think that might make sense, just writing in that flexibility.
Right, giving them some sort of appeal process towards it.
George?
That'd be the common sense cause?
Yeah, I guess. Stated another way, I think that, that, that's about right. John?
Now, that was a lot of the discussion we had with the Dollar General folks, if you remember, Dan, with how many people visited and how often and how long they, they stayed, and they felt that our requirements were way too stringent, which is why we did the compromise with the shared space with Mr. Kessler's property there. So I think we need more wiggle room, like you said, in requirements for parking. Should be more business and site-specific.
Yeah.
So some point, we should address the, some area for them to have electric car charging stations because not that I'm a proponent of electric cars, don't get me wrong, but many of the manufacturers are rolling out a lot of electric car models. And they want to, people to buy electric cars. There's gonna be a lot of government incentives for it. There's government incentives for charging stations, and I, I think that if anybody that builds a new development and doesn't at least put in some infrastructure so they can add it later, is on the short end of the stick here eventually.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yeah, sure, Nick.
Yeah, John, thank you for saying that. I actually had that on my notes. I just wrote, discuss requirements of electric charging stations. You know, in terms of at a very bare minimum, requiring the conduit to be there, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I know this is not the first time that discussing adopting a dig-on's policy has been talked about, so I can certainly add that to our, our list of More urgent topics. I I think that's important. I I'm aware of a lot of communities across the state that do that. And then, wait, where's this, I had one more thing I really wanted to bring up and I cannot find it. Another thing too, that I had read, not necessarily what I included, but just the other research that I have done. Um, is that oftentimes. Communities will leave their parking requirements artificially high. Um, but then provide that wiggle room and use that as a negotiation tactic to get more from the developer. You know, I I guess it's person to person on how you feel about that, but. Uh, really what I was reading about applies more to, you know, big developed cities. And I think the the article I was reading about specifically was talking about California, but. You know, the parking requirements would be listed artificially high, and then there would be ways that the developer could negotiate with the planning commission. Um, to get those requirements reduced, whether it was those shared parking agreements or, um. You know, uh, making payments in lieu of putting in parking. Um, and then that funding would be earmarked for. Uh, what I'm remembering having read was that it was earmarked specifically for. Uh, non-motorized transportation, so things like bike lanes and bike bike storage. Uh, trails, sidewalks, things like that. But it is used as a negotiation tool, and so. Uh, you know, I think if we follow what John's saying about providing that flexibility, I think it makes a lot of sense. Whether we use it as a negotiation tool or not.
I can tell you, having worked in the Bay Area and Sacramento area. There's quite a lot of electrical charging stations attached to retail. Uh, outlets or or shopping malls where it 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 appeared to me that I don't know how they provided for it, but it looked. Almost suspiciously like they gave tax abatements or tax reductions to businesses that allowed. Uh, those property or those parking facilities or charging facilities to exist on their footprint. And it would not be unusual to go to the store and see thirteen cars plugged in, reading the paper or. Smoking a cigarette while they're waiting for their car to charge and then they take off and go, I mean, it's everywhere you go, that's the way it is.
Yeah, just another point on that, I read something recently about, you know, that there's still a lack of standardization in electric vehicle charging, so, you know, every company. Has a somewhat different standard, and so. And some of those kind, those companies are incentivizing those businesses in in different places. To put in their particular standard for charging, right, and so. That's another thing that we probably ought to address is that, you know, if we require some sort of electrical vehicle charging, what standard are we are we requiring, if any? Uh, and and maybe, you know, that's going to change when federal laws or state laws sort of clamp down and try to figure out the non-standardization problem. But to me, that's a pretty big issue.
Put that cart before the horse.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a real issue in North America, Dan, because right now there's four different plug standards. And they they don't, they're not interchangeable.
Right. Hey, so I wanted to go back to a comment I made, just to clarify something, um, so Bert, maybe this is a question for Bert and Nick, so, you know, remembering back on the Dollar General. Discussion about parking, we had that parking agreement with Darryl Kessler. And if I remember correctly, it was a way to sort of. Fudge the minimum requirement in some respects, because we thought the ordinance was ambiguous enough that we could sort of get away with that, sort of sharing. The requirement among Dollar General and and Kessler's business, do I have that right? And and if if we couldn't have done that. You you need to go to the ZBA to re to get a variance on the parking minimum, don't you?
You do twenty, section twenty-two dot oh four, sub parent B four is exactly where you would read that. So, so yes, you would have to go to the, at this moment, unless something's changed. If you can't meet the minimal parking requirements. Truly, you guys can approve their site plan until they get a variance.
Yeah.
So if you're looking for some wiggle room or some discretion, if you want to call it that. Um, you you'd need to make those language changes to make that happen.
Right, I think there's some language in here about as it relates to shared parking. Um, but in general, I I think what Bert is saying is accurate, yeah, okay, I just found it. Section seventeen point oh two off-street parking general provisions, uh, subsection E one. Uh, so E says, when where the owner of two buildings or uses desire to share a common off-street parking facility. The zoning administrator may grant approval of such dual function off-street parking facilities. Subject to a finding that the following conditions have been met. Uh, those two conditions are that the common parking lot meets the off-street parking requirements of the larger building. Or use plus an additional thirty-three percent. And the second requirement is that the common parking lot meets all locational requirements of this ordinance with respect to each building or use. So if you had a a use that required fifty parking spaces and a use that required a hundred parking spaces. Uh, to have shared parking, you would have to include a hundred and thirty-three spaces. So you'd get a little bit of of reduction there. But in that example, it's not much.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. So, you know, I think what I'm hearing from people, it sounds like we are in somewhat agreement that. We could try to provide a little bit more discretion to the planning commission on parking issues, and so that might be a fairly easy way to make. To to address the issue and a fairly easy way to change the ordinance to to address this. And but, you know, I I do think that it might be good for us to think about. Examples at least of the criteria. Kind of by which we might provide more flexibility to a developer, and some of the things have already been mentioned here, right? You know, even on the shared parking. Uh, you know, if it were a pub and a daytime sort of grocery store. Where one is using it heavily during the day and one is using heavily during the evening, that kind of. That kind of context would be probably pretty important in thinking about and providing some flexibility in parking. So I think, you know, we could just provide that language on discretion and then provide a number of examples where the planning commission might consider more flexibility.
I had a slide, actually, I just found it, so I'm gonna pull up my screen here. From one piece I had researched here. Uh, that shows peak time for different uses. Um, and this ties in exactly to what you're talking about, Dan, businesses that are gonna have your highest usage during the day. Uh, or, excuse me, at a weekday during the evening and then on the weekend. And and that's spot on, I I think that's a really good point. I don't know if that ends up looking like some sort of a table where if they wanted shared use, say, okay, this is. You know, comparing time of day. Um, but I I think there's something to be said for that. Actually, this just talks about shared parking in general, so. Uh, that's. Something for us to think about. Um, one thing that I have to admit, I was a little afraid I was going to hear, and I'm glad I haven't. Uh, was, um, as I had started looking at this topic back in January, I started looking at. Surrounding communities and what they require, and what I found is that the requirements are generally pretty comparable. Um, and then upon some reflection, I went, why am I doing this? You know, because they're probably doing the same thing, looking at what we're doing. And so everybody's just following the same standard because nobody's pushing the envelope, so. I think we have an opportunity here to, uh, to do something that's that's beneficial to the community and. For developers as well, so I'm I'm excited that we're talking about this.
Right, yeah, just some some general thoughts, I think, on on parking in general, the stuff that you sent us, Nick, I thought was really good, and I liked what they're talking about. A lot of that pertains to. Cities that are much larger than Bath, the concepts are good, and I think what we need to look at is. What do we want Bath to look like in ten to twenty years? Because the type of parking we provide, and the last. Thing on your slide you showed, Nick, was on-street parking. And how we want to incorporate that into our parking standards. Because if if we end up with an area, this kind of a downtown area that might allow on-street parking. Are we, how are we going to incorporate that into the requirements for parking for a development? We need to somehow address that issue. And and as we get bigger, in one of those articles, it talks about pricing of parking. In working in Lansing, there was always a concern there that we didn't have enough parking. The problem was more perception than actuality, what it was is that they didn't have parking in front of the stores where he wanted it. And that's where parking pricing comes in, is you you charge more for the meters on the street and less for the parking in the ramps. And that kind of forces people, okay, if you really want to pay for it, you're gonna pay dearly to park on the street. But there's parking available someplace else, it's gonna be cheaper. And so that's just another concept we've got to look at. There's, I don't know, you've probably all been to Frankenmuth, but there's a small shopping area just south of Frankenmuth. Where it's, the parking's on the outside of the shopping area, you walk in, it looks like you're walking to the back, some entrances, back of the stores, but you get inside of the development. And it's all walking. Which is kind of a neat idea, once you get into it, and there are other places in in Michigan that are like that, where they've got. Interior shopping and the parking's on the outside, they might have fountains in there, there's one down by Detroit, it's actually got a, a, uh. Kind of a fireplace place, kind of heated for for the winter. But those kind of, if we get into an area in Bath where we have a shopping complex like that, and the one by the, um. Dollar General might be, is that develops, we kind of look at something like that, is. Make the buildings be interior and have the park on the outside. So I just some some thoughts like that, we need to need to look at, I think. You know, long range.
Um, I just want to piggyback off of that, I know last time when we talked about architectural standards. Uh, one of the standards that I had recommended is that, at least in the. High-density development district and possibly the development district. Uh, that we require the parking be on the side or the rear of the building. Um, I remember being asked by at least one of you to identify some, uh. Sources, not necessarily sources, but, um, you know, organizations or something that support that idea, so. This is, this is almost gonna sound rude, but, uh, American Planning Association supports that, uh, Congress for the New Urbanism supports that. Uh, so does Smart Growth America. Um, I found countless metropolitan planning organizations across the the country that support that. Um, and it's a thing that most major cities do as well. And so I I think Ray's point about a lot of this research on parking being oriented towards bigger communities is really valid. Um, but unfortunately, if you look at the broader context of most research on. City and regional planning, it is urban focused. Um, so trying to take that research and adapt it to a a smaller community, uh, like Bath can be a challenge. Um, but I still think it's worthwhile thinking about. I just have one more. Source that I wanted to share, I meant to bring the book home from me with me from my office. I have a book that is about seven hundred and fifty pages. Uh, all about parking and pricing of parking, written by a retired, uh, urban planning professor at UCLA. And, uh. His his name's Donald Shoup or Schout. And, uh, he is the one who wrote that book and, um. People have really seemed to be buying into this idea that he's talking about, and so there's actually a Facebook page called the Shoe Pistas. Uh, that's sort of like a joke, uh, cult following of of people who buy into his parking ideas, so. I just thought I'd share that as a a funny little piece there.
Joel, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I mean, if we're talking Bath specific, you know, I've had, I've lived here virtually my whole life and. Pet peeves of mine are, you know, the amount of parking we have in road right of way, particularly where there's no asphalt surface and. It destroys the shoulder of the of the street or the road and ultimately caves in the the side of the asphalt and causes us more expense long term. Um, we're not. We're not really looking Bath specific without addressing. The parking along some of our streets, particularly in the the sodded areas where it just gets tore up. And eventually it costs us more money for the roads, I don't know if George can wants to. Comment on that since he's on the road committee and has been for years, but I mean. I'm a fan of angled parking where we can, but that's adding essentially another lane of asphalt that we would have to pay for to put down. Uh, and do we really have the kind of. Density or or complexity of the parking that we need that everywhere, as the answer is no, but there are places where it probably makes some sense where. It's more densely, you know, housed or where we have apartments. Uh, or will have apartments eventually. But that's just kind of a pet peeve of mine, guys, I just, uh, it kind of bothers me that we tear the heck out of the. The the road right of way by just people have room in their driveways and they choose to park near the street for whatever reason, I don't know.
I I kind of agree with what you're saying, Joel, in talking about angle parking, you said, in on-street parking where we get businesses. I think it needs to be curb and gutter, we shouldn't allow. In business areas. On-street parking where there's no curb and gutter, because you're right, it tears up the lawns and everything else. And as far as angle parking is concerned, there are places where angle parking is good and it should be. At like sixty-degree angle parking, and it's somewhat of a controversy whether it should be head-in parking or or back-in parking. And I think the safety records show that back-in parking is a lot safer than head-in parking. The parking maneuver is probably a little more difficult for some people who don't like to back into a spot. But it's a lot safer when they leave. And it's especially a lot safer for bicyclists, because somebody's trying to back out of a spot, can't see the bicycle coming. Or another car, if you're driving out, it's pretty easy. And backing into an angle parking spot is really no harder than backing to a parallel parking spot, so. It's kind of the same thing, so I think we do allow back-in parking, that's something we've got to consider is how do we want to head in or back in.
Okay, so I think you had a, we had a pretty good discussion here, I wonder if we can just sort of, uh, think about next step. Uh, what we want to see kind of in our next meeting when we bring this issue up. Any suggestions there?
I do have one. Um, rather than the arbitrary thirty-three percent increase for shared parking. I don't know how that number was ever developed, but it. Probably is higher than it needs to be. Uh, is there a way that we could redo said even more? Other than our flexibility or the whatever, uh, can't remember what Bert said. The word we were looking for.
Just adding more discretion, yeah.
Yeah, discretion.
John?
Yeah, I think if we could just add some language that gave us a little more flexibility, uh, that would be well, Dan, I I don't. I don't know that we need extensive rules and regulations here. We're all pretty reasonable people. I think we can come to some agreement with every developer as to what would be acceptable.
Uh, so Ray, and then I guess Nick, Ray, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay, Nick?
Um, so I guess. The conclusion I'm coming to, and actually just had this idea, much like the architectural standards, we're looking to put those as guidelines. I think what might actually be helpful, might be a bit controversial. Um, but given that every use is gonna end up coming to the planning commission that has parking requirements anyway. Unless it requires five spaces or fewer. Um, I almost wonder if it could work where we develop a set of parking guidelines rather than requirements. And then the planning commission has that discretion and uses those guidelines along with a discussion and a negotiation. With the applicant to determine what they think is appropriate.
I'd be okay with that.
Yep, I would be too, I like that idea.
I mean, as long as, I guess, what you're saying, though, is that, so, I mean, I wouldn't want to eliminate the requirements, right, uh, altogether. Just because I think there has to be some sort of a baseline.
Yes.
About expectations, uh, so, you know, in the articles that you sent around, there's some some. Some cities are completely eliminating parking requirements, so I wouldn't want it to be that with the guidelines and our own flexibility. Seems like a starting point is a good reference point to begin that negotiation. But you could do, I think you could do all of the above, essentially, is what I'm saying. So you you provide the flexibility in the ordinance, but then provide the developer with some understanding under what conditions. We're gonna relax those requirements and what we would like to actually see, and those could be the guidelines. If that makes sense, uh, Bert?
Yeah, I like that idea, um. They would need to adhere to your current standards or demonstrate by some sort of a study what their true need is.
Yeah. Or if they are sort of. If they're if they're providing an argument that kind of fits the guidelines that we are providing, right, so under certain conditions. Here's where we offer flexibility, maybe without specifying what kind of flexibility, just that we're willing to kind of negotiate that minimum down. George? George?
Bert, got it.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I want to be careful with that one, Bert, because we could have a situation where the use of the building changed and the requirements would change as well. Because you could have somebody that had a, let's say they had a pub and they're going to go out of business and put in a hair salon. Now you've got a whole different set of time of day use and everything else. So. I think we want to be kind of careful about going too far here in one way or the other.
If they did change the use, the second they changed the use, the new site plan is required and now we'll be looking at parking again anyway.
Uh, yeah, but you're going to have some instances where it's going to be really hard to change the amount of parking you got.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, John.
That is a good point.
You know, market conditions might just affect who's, who's going to want to be there, given the limitations in parking, right? So.
Correct.
Yeah, but you're right. I think that's a good point. So I don't know, what does people think? Nick, kind of, maybe a first cut is to provide that kind of discretionary language. In the ordinance and, and get the entire parking ordinance in front of us again. You know, maybe some ideas on conditions under which we would allow some more flexibility, kind of. Like, you know, I like the table that you provided, Nick. I think that would be helpful as part of our guidelines for developers to think about. Mixed uses kind of in, in a parking area. So that would be one example of something that you could include in a, in a guidelines document.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable to people? Nick, that sounds okay to you? Okay. And then, you know, obviously you, you provided some other ideas. And so if, if we want to add. Want to do some things beyond just providing flexibility and you had some good ideas, I think, earlier in the, in the discussion. You could include some of those ideas to either in the margins or somewhere else that we can kind of think about where we put some things or where we change some things.
Yeah, what I'll do is sort of add a section at the end that's just, I guess I'll call it like food for thought or something, some other ideas. One thing that I, I think we should think about is, you know, pervious pavement. Whether that be actual pervious payment, pavement or parking lots, that the parking spaces are some sort of other material. I think that's beneficial from a, you know, stormwater perspective. But, you know, we can talk about that down the road.
Okay, great. Now, George?
Seeing as we live in Michigan, do we want to include any? Amount of space per, for snow? Instead of piling up in the parking lot, if you reduce the spaces, then you're going to lose. Where you put the snow essentially.
Yeah, it's a good point. We don't have anything that addresses snow, do we, in the parking requirements or anywhere else in the ordinance?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Bert, are you familiar with any communities in Michigan that have language like that?
I am not. I've never read one thing about. Where you, where you would put snow.
Typically, we have enough parking spaces. They just compile it in the parking lot. And if we reduce the parking lot. Going to reduce. Spots in the winter. I'm not saying we absolutely need it. Most people have common sense that they need to have a place to put their snow, their carts and everything else they have at their business.
It kind of becomes a cost consideration though, because if, if they're really concerned that they need more parking in the winter. Their option then would be to truck the snow away. It becomes a little more costly, but they, you've either got to, you know, do we want them to pave an extra twenty percent of their parking lot for snow, snow storage? We want to say you can't do that. Instead of spending that money on building that parking lot, truck it.
It could.
Maybe we should have a green space requirement.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Both in the wintertime and in the summer.
Sorry, I keep putting my parking notes away and then you guys keep making more good points.
All right. So you got that last little conversation?
Yes, I'm just writing one note down real quick.
Okay, okay, that was good. That was a good initial discussion. Pretty, pretty helpful, I think. All right. So let's move on to the second item under new business, which is the discussion of the communications franchise agreement between Bath. And wow, I think between wow, right? Digital media, the parent company of wow.
That's the entity that the agreement is under, but it is wow.
Yeah, okay. All right. We've got that included in the packet. And I, I don't know exactly what the question is before us, I guess, and not blaming Nick or anybody. I just want to know kind of what we're doing.
Yeah, so this, this. Sorry, Dan, this was requested. To be sent down to the planning commission by the board of trustees. It was originally. Jason Almarigi's idea that the planning commission, look at this. I think at the time there was some belief that the, the township had some leeway to negotiate with wow. At least my understanding now is it sounds like there's not much room for negotiation. As far as I'm aware, I believe state law sort of sets these franchise agreements as being pretty standard in their language. You know, really the intent, I think, is, is just to hold. These ISPs accountable. For. Boy, I wish Ryan was here. He had to step away for a few minutes. Because he, he had some very strong, but I thought very accurate words at the last board of trustees meeting. You know, for overcharging for service that's inadequate. And so that's, that was really why there was interest here. In terms of why it was specifically kicked to the planning commission, I think the, the mindset there was as it relates to our telecommunications ordinance. And whether we had any, any wiggle room there. The way that I've read that is that it, it appears to be focused on cable television. That ordinance hasn't been updated since the eighties, so likely since it was adopted. But. There, there had been some thought that maybe there was wiggle room there, or perhaps it made sense for the planning commission to look at updating that ordinance. But as far as I'm aware, that's all the knowledge or information I have as to what we were supposed to be looking at.
Okay, I mean, looking at the ordinance, so it would be helpful then to get either Jason or Ryan's kind of thoughts on, on this, but. I mean, looking at the ordinance, there are some that appear to be kind of benchmarks. For providers that are working on, under contract in the township, you know, and in specific sort of access percentages. Over a period of years, three years, five years, six years. And I don't know if those are things, those seem like pretty explicit in the, in the contract. I don't know. They're ambiguous to me because I don't know, like for example, they talk about video service. Is that cable television? Does that include internet service? I, I don't know. But those might be places that we can check with the provider to see that they have met these numbers. If there are numbers that pertain to broadband access especially.
Right. So, and you know, another thing that was pointed out. Was that this letter about the. And, and this really pertains to wow specifically, but the letter regarding this contract was addressed to Paula Clark. Who hasn't been the supervisor here in, in years. And so I, I think that was not particularly well received either, at least from what I saw. But as it relates specifically to our ordinance, I really do think that that, you know, obviously that was written at a time when the internet was not really a thing. So it, from my reading is geared towards television.
Our, our ordinance is.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, so I mean, it may be something, I don't know if that's a separate issue, just to bring back that portion of the ordinance and have a look at that. I mean, we've also talked, you know, several times, you mentioned it tonight, this dig once policy, which I think is a pretty important thing that we ought to undertake. And so maybe as part of that conversation, we just look at the telecommunications portion of the, of the ordinance too.
We can certainly do that. I'll make sure that we're able to have Jason here when we have that conversation. Since he is the one who was interested in this and asked that it be added. To the agenda. I think he really did want to be here tonight, but it did sound like he had something urgent that he needed to deal with relating to work. So. Excuse me, I, you know, haven't really had much of a chance to talk with him in detail about what the request was. But I didn't want to push it off for another two weeks.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I looked at it and I, I skimmed it admittedly, but I didn't see anything that sort of. To me, gave us any traction on overcharging for inferior service, that idea, which. But it may be there and I just missed it, something like that.
Right. Okay, good. It looks like Ryan's back, so.
All right. So yeah, maybe before we move on, we can hear what Ryan has to say.
In a diatribe part two.
Ryan, are you there? Hey, Ryan. We're talking about the, the, the ordinance and the, the telecommunications agreement with, with wow, I guess. And we don't have anybody, I guess, that maybe is going to, can fully explain sort of what the planning commission ought to be doing here or what the concerns are. And it sounds like you did have some specific concerns and maybe Jason too, but wondering if you could share those with us.
Yeah, I. Part of it is we need to figure out what, what we have the ability to do. We're sort of in a time crunch here and. In, in some senses, we're past the deadline. So I think what the spirit of referring it to the planning commission was to. Ask some of those questions that we need to ask of wow, maybe renegotiate some of these items. I believe the superintendent was also taking this to the legal counsel to give us a, some feedback on. But I, I could have misunderstood that piece. Ultimately, I think the board sort of feels like we're not getting good service from wow. What are our options? What do we want to do with them? Jason had compared the agreement to the law and it seemed like there was some flexibility there. So without a lot of more context than that, that's sort of, you know, I guess we bring to you the questions we had and. To see what questions you might have and, and how you might want to pursue this. We just don't have a ton of time, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's helpful. I mean, I do think that, you know, getting legal counsel's opinion on this and particularly the point about what flexibility we have. And renegotiating or amending the contract is probably the most important factor here. Because if we don't have any wiggle room because of state law, there's probably no point in kind of doing too much with this.
Nick, was it your understanding that Karen was taking this to the legal counsel?
I have no recollection of whether she did or not in terms of whether she was intending to. I think it's a good idea, but I don't remember. I talked with her very briefly about this, this morning. And she didn't sound very confident that we had much wiggle room. But I think it's probably a good idea if I can have another conversation with her. And Jason, at the very least, if not including Ryan and some others in that as well. So that we can understand what our options are if we have any.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. So Nick, I guess if this is going to happen kind of in between meetings, maybe you could kind of keep me in the loop too. And if there are any meetings, I'd, I'd like to attend just so I can kind of understand what's, what's. What, what the issues are, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, great. So let's, let's move on to the third item under new business, which is the added item of. The Nokaloff's development. And so maybe it's easiest just to start with Nick, to kind of summarize where we are with that.
Thank you. Yes, I was hoping that that I could provide some context. So for those of you who are not familiar, I know a couple of, of people emailed me just asking about this particular issue. The Nokaloff's project was completed, I believe sometime in twenty nineteen. Essentially from that completion or shortly beforehand, there have been. Somewhat consistent complaints about site plan violations and code enforcement issues. That have been, you know, brought up or not brought up with the property owner. Having said that, it's my understanding that those issues have not been resolved. I would certainly say the current issues on the property have not been resolved. But I know this is the, an issue that the planning commission feels very strongly about. And has asked me on a number of occasions to continue to follow up on. I met last Monday. With a representative from Westpac who was the developer. Bert Gale was there, of course, as our zoning administrator. The property manager for Nokaloff was at that meeting as well, and so was the lands, the new landscaper for the property. Before that meeting, Bert Gale and I did a, a complete. You know, drive around the site, inspecting primarily the landscaping, but general adherence with the site plan. There were countless instances where. There were trees that were missing, significant numbers of plantings that were missing. Landscaping areas that are wildly overgrown and, and not being cared for. There were parking spaces that were constructed that were not approved. There were a couple of pocket parks that had been approved and were never constructed. There's a. Three seating, outdoor seating areas that were never constructed. And then in addition to that, also the current sign along Chandler Road. Has only been half updated and that project, you know, is coming up on two years of completion. So the, the property owner has been made aware of these issues. In, in addition to issues, for example, over the winter with complete. Excuse me, issues with snow removal, consistent issues with dog waste on the property. So it's, it's a very lengthy list of, of issues, whether they're site plan issues or just general code violations. To back up a little bit more, Westpac has submitted a proposed site plan amendment for the existing Nokaloff's property. To add carports over. Upwards of a hundred parking spaces. In addition to that, they've also submitted a site plan. For what they're calling Nokaloff's North, which is that undeveloped portion just to the north of the existing Nokaloff's. As I had mentioned a couple of meetings back, my recommendation to you all. Was that. The current issues be dealt with before any new proposals be considered. I certainly recognize that there may be some issues with doing it that way. I tried to make it clear to the applicant that. I felt that they would have a better chance of being approved. If they showed a good faith effort to resolve their current issues. So now going back to that meeting on Monday. You know, Bert and I had a lengthy conversation with them and identified those issues, provided them with a. They took an image of, of our marked up map of the existing violations. I was assured that by the end of last week that there would be efforts made to clean up the property. I wish I could tell you there have been efforts, but there have been exactly zero efforts to clean up this property. And I've been told that they're looking at. Remedy the couple of issues, for example, the parking having been constructed where it wasn't approved. Merging those couple of things in with their proposed site plan with the. Carports and that they would get that to me. I have not received that yet. But, you know, I. I, I, based on what I've seen, I'm, I'm concerned about compliance. Obviously, I'm not the code enforcement officer anymore, but he's also well aware of this issue and has spoken with them at length about this. The super, the, excuse me, the township superintendent is also aware of this and is equally frustrated. So I'm not sure where we go from here, but, you know, I, I think. Continually asking them to resolve the issues is not working. So I'm not sure what other approaches. Were. On the table for us to look at.
I'm the person that asks to be added to the agenda, Dan. And I, I'm tired of Westpac and their way they've dealt with us. They send out the water boy who can't make any real decisions. Obviously their onsite manager can't make any decisions. As far as I'm concerned, they never came and finished the site plan as it was approved. They, they didn't put the green space in, they put parking spaces that weren't approved. So. So as far as I'm concerned, they never finished the original site plan. I don't know how they, uh, managed to avoid finishing up the site plan before they were able to, uh, uh, occupy the property. But, um, maybe there was some understanding, they would be in compliance with the site plan. But I certainly don't feel that there's any application on our part to issue them any other, uh, site plans or any modifications until they complete the site plan that's been approved. And I'm tired of them sending the water boy. I, uh, the people in, in Hawaii and the people in California are the decision makers. We know this from past dealings with them. So they can either get on board or they can pack up as far as I'm concerned. I'm tired of them.
Joel, question I've got on this, kind of what John's bringing up, the certificate of occupancy. We could have just, I, I guess, since they didn't finish the site plan, they probably shouldn't have gotten a certificate of occupancy, should they? And who's, who's responsible for making sure that happens? It was my question.
Next predecessor.
Okay. So it's really, it really becomes a planning, it's planning, not zoning, it, it enforces the, uh, I guess, who is that authorizes the certificate of occupancy? And how we make sure that doesn't happen again?
Well, trust me, it won't. Um, I can't, I can't tell you exactly how that happened, Ray, at all. Um, typically we wouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy unless we got a thumbs up from, well, it would, it would have been next predecessor because he would do it both, running administration and planning.
Yep. Joel?
Yeah, I was just asking, has the supervisor and superintendent asked legal counsel for advice or where are we at with this thing?
Um, to my knowledge, she has not asked legal counsel for advice. Um, you know, there certainly is the option of writing citations under, uh, the point of it being a violation of our zoning ordinance for a site plan violation. Um, it, and, and again, this is without legal counsel input. Um, but each individual day that they violate the site plan is a separate violation. That's the way it's written in the ordinance. I think in my own personal opinion, that would escalate things really quickly.
Is that after notification of violations of the site plan or?
The way our ordinance is written, we do provide them with notification that there's a violation first.
So, so the other question I had was, you know, obviously we could have some leverage if they're thinking to do amending the site plan, right? Uh, but I'm just wondering legally, do we actually have that leverage? You know, can we tie past performance under a previous site plan to consideration of amending that site plan or a new site plan?
Um, I'll largely defer to Bert. My gut is telling me absolutely.
Yeah, I thi- I think, uh, you certainly have the ability to, uh, um, to condition something for sure. Um, and so, you know, you could, you could certain, I think, and I think we should double check, double check this with the legal counsel. But I think that if they came to you, you could just simply say, you know what? Um, you're proposing to amend your site plan because that's virtually what they're doing. And, uh, we're not really interested in, uh, even hearing that because, uh, how can you amend a site plan that was never in compliance? That, that's my thought.
Yeah, can I make a motion?
Yeah, Joel.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the township board and the supervisor to rec, uh, to seek legal opinion on what our enforcement rights are on this matter.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the table. Any support for the motion?
Let's support that. All right, Ray. Uh, so further discussion on the motion.
So, um, what is the board? I mean, has the, has this issue been brought before the board?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to the current board at least.
At the current board. Okay. Um, I mean, I, I mean, I.
Recommendation anyway.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah. But I mean, I, I support, I support the motion, um, just because, you know, I, I think we should be very, very clear about what leverage we have and, and what leverage maybe we don't have, right? Uh, we should be prepared to have those negotiations with, uh, Westpac. So.
Another, another comment, I guess, is Nick, you mentioned violations of the, of the site, current site plan, that we could write up violations for all this stuff. Uh, we write the violations, a penalty for that. How enforceable is that? Do we end up in court to enforce that or maybe another thing to make sure the attorney's letting us know? How do we have, how do we enforce the violations?
My guess is that it, it more than likely would end up in court. Um, let me pull up, it's section twenty five point, or excuse me, section twenty one point oh five, for anyone who's curious. Uh, talks about enforcement and violation. And it says, uh, whenever the zoning administrator determines that a violation of this ordinance exists, the zoning administrator may issue a notice of violation, uh, then states that such violation needs to be directed to each owner of or a party in interest of the property. Um, it says notices of violation shall be served in writing, um, and be served upon the person to whom they are directed personally or, uh, mailed to that person. Um, and then it needs to provide a timeframe for corrective action. Um, and, and then section twenty one point oh six talks about fees. Uh, it states that the township board shall periodically establish by resolution of schedule of fees for administering this ordinance. Um, Bert, for some reason in my mind, the, the numbers of first violation being a hundred and twenty five, the second being two fifty, and each subsequent violation being five hundred dollars is coming to mind, but I can't recall where I found that within our ordinance.
Yeah, I think you're correct. And it didn't take me a minute to find that, but yeah, I think you're correct. Uh, so it would be a municipal civil infraction for sure.
And those are assessed, you said, Nick, on a, a daily basis?
Well, they can be.
They can be. There's, there's language within our ordinance that states that, um, each subsequent day of a violation shall be considered a separate, uh, violation, which means a separate ticket with a separate fine could be assessed. Um, can you not chew on my shoes? Thank you. Um, while we're on this topic, um, I do want to put out there one thing that was, um, and I, I think this actually may tie back into some of the discussion about the certificate of occupancy in my predecessor. Um, there was a statement made to me at that meeting that, um, I was bothered by. Um, and I, I think you, all of you would agree that it's not accurate. There was a, uh, statement said that there were no issues with site plan violations on this property until I moved here. Um, that's completely inaccurate. Um, and I, I know you all would, would find, would agree with that, that that's not accurate. You know, whether or not, uh, my predecessor took those seriously or not, I think is a completely different story.
That's, I mean, I guess technically it might be true that there were no issues, meaning they were not expressed. But obviously there were issues and maybe they were ignored. I, I don't know how to even, that's not a serious comment in my opinion, and, and it doesn't matter at all.
Well, I, I addressed that during that meeting, by the way. I told him that it doesn't really have, there's, it has nothing to do with whether a township employee lives at that establishment or not. The fact of the matter is, is that they're not in compliance.
Yeah, exactly. So, all right. Well, we do have a motion. We have support before us and, and the motion is to, uh, uh, recommend to supervisor, township board to get legal counsel's advice on this matter. So, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? All right. So the motion is passed. So, uh, Nick and or Bert, I guess, could you, could you communicate to the board and the supervisor?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. All right. So next item, uh, is the report from the planner. Uh, Nick, do you have anything to add to previous comments?
I do. I have several things, the first of which I did have to put off. Um, as I've mentioned, uh, I have hired an intern. Uh, she is here. She's got her camera off, but I'm hoping she'll turn it on to at least say hi. Um, her name is Felicia and she goes by Fee. Um, this is her second day and I'm really happy she's here. Um, it's always great to have an extra pair of hands and, uh, someone eager to learn and, and work on planning issues with us. Um, as I've said, she does seem to have quite a bit of an interest in, uh, environmental planning. So I'm hoping that we can have some conversations about, uh, particular things in that realm that perhaps she can work on over the summer. Uh, whether those be issues we've already identified or finding new things for her to work on.
Great Fee, welcome. Really glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Nick.
That's, that's my first thing. Um, well, I guess my, my second thing was regarding Nokaloff's, but obviously we just spoke about that. Um, the only other thing I have for a report from planner is, um, that I'm hoping that there will be a Webster Road committee meeting scheduled soon, uh, so that we can continue to have conversations regarding that. Um, I thought the last meeting was pretty productive, but I'm hoping that we can have another one, uh, to continue that conversation. Um, I personally have put together a, a brief, uh, PowerPoint for that, um, just pointing out some of the issues uh, that can be resolved, I, I believe very easily. Excuse me. Um, for example, the travel lanes on, uh, Webster Road are, are far too wide for what they should be, and that's causing speeding issues. So, um, I'll address that more at the, uh, the Webster Road Committee. And then if, if it's requested that I talk at the planning commission in more detail about that, I can do that as well.
Is that it, Nick?
That's all I have.
All right. Any comments, questions for Nick? All right. So we get to the second opportunity for general public comment. Again, I don't see any, uh, any public with us today. And then, uh, finally, almost finally, uh, Ryan, do you have a report from the trustees?
Yeah, not too much to report. We had a, a short meeting last week. Uh, the, sort of the biggest news that I think touches a bit on the planning commission is the, we got a letter from the state saying that the DDA is out of compliance. So we're going to have to figure out what we need to do as a board to bring it into compliance or choose some sort of pathway to move forward. We still don't have any new, um, appointees yet. So, uh, again, the supervisor was not there to be able to talk about what her vision was for appointing folks. She's said multiple times in meetings that she's not going to appoint individual people. She wants to appoint the entire board. Uh, and we just have not, we have not done that yet. So unfortunately the DDA is, doesn't have enough people to meet, uh, for quorum, and so they can't vote on paying their, you know, taxes and other bills that they have due. So the board has sort of been playing a de facto role, uh, to help provide some cover frankly for the treasurer. So he's not doing it in a vacuum, so that there's some public accountability and shared ownership of the decisions made until, uh, appointees are, are put on the DDA. So I'm not, I'm honestly not sure what the board wants to do with that, where we're going to go, or if there's, uh, appointees coming to us at our next meeting. Uh, it, it should be interesting though. I think there's something like two hundred, two hundred thirty seven thousand, something like that dollars in the DDA account. So it's not an insignificant amount of money. The rest was ma- mainly updates, but nothing, no action, nothing that rises to the level of, of sharing at this point.
Okay, thanks. Any comments for, or questions for Ryan? George?
If the, did they say what happens in that DDA, something, does that, does that funding go back into the general? I can't, I thought they said.
I, I don't, I don't want to speak with confidence because I'm not sure, but my understanding is there are taxable authorities that we have taken that funding from, like the, uh, RISA and LCC that I think we would have to refund the money. That's, that's my gut, not a legal, uh, designation. So, uh, well, I'm hoping this is on the agenda, uh, next week as well, so we can start to really dig in and figure out what are we going to do? Is, is there a movement afoot to dissolve the DDA if that happens? What does happen to the, the funding, things like that?
Thank you.
Ryan, what's the nature of the non-compliance? I guess I don't understand.
Uh, I think we haven't had enough board members, uh, present, you know, to operate. Yeah, and it's been a long time since we've had, uh, an operational forum to be able to, to do things. And ultimately we have to file paperwork that's like an annual report, and I think a financial statement with the state to show that we're using this tax increment financing appropriately. And there just hasn't been anybody in existence to put that together. And it's questionable what activity has even happened in order to put on paper to send to them. So it's, it's ugly. Uh, i- in the non-compliance isn't even like twenty twenty one nine, non-compliance. It's something like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty non-compliance. So we're still very much non-compliant and they just haven't figured that out yet because, uh, the due date for the new annual report hasn't come due yet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Ryan. All right. So this is the last opportunity for planning commission, uh, just general comments. George?
Welcome Fee, and also would like to thank, uh, all those behind, uh, behind the box, so to speak, that make everything happen in our township. Uh, it's nice to call the township and talk to a person, not get a machine. That's greatly appreciated by some of the older folks I talk to, so I'd just like to mention that. But, um, I, I'm thankful for all those that make the things happen that we don't see every day. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, George. Other comments? Uh, John, do I see? Yep.
I certainly, uh, support what, uh, George just said about our staff and our, uh, boards. Uh, I think they're doing a great job given the hurdles that they've got to deal with. Especially the supervisor.
Thanks, John. Other comments?
I would agree with that because I think, I think now that Nick's on board and stuff, I see things happening in the planning area a lot more proactive, proactively than they had in the past. And I really appreciate that because it looks like now we're, we're really starting to get involved in some things that really mean something.
Yep, I agree. And good to have, uh, more support for Nick too here.
Yes.
All right, great. All right. So, um, motion to adjourn. Would anybody like to make that motion? Joel, support? George, uh, in support? Okay. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Great, everyone. Thanks for a very productive meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah.